Well, good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you here to the meeting of the Minnehaha County Commission. We'll go ahead and start the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. Meeting documents are available for review down next to Commissioner Hiberger. Just a reminder to silence your cellphone. And Carol is here if you need a listening device. So take us to routine business. First item is a motion to amend the agenda to remove item 4H, the Auditor's Office Financials Reports for January 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now I consider a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item is to approve the commission meeting minutes from February 11, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are bills to be paid in the amount of $3,962,286.36.
Pay the bills.
Second.
Motion and a second to pay the bills. Any comments?
Madam Chair. Well, Cindy has got her hand up.
Probably the same one Commissioner Barth was going to make is that there is $3,243,000 in some odd cents here going to the state motor vehicle collections. And so that's the majority of what our bill says.
Another chunk, if I may, is $306,000 to the library quarterly payment.
All right. Anything else? Okay, the motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. There are reports. First report is the Register of Deeds Revenue Report for January 2020. The auditor's accounts were removed. We have a really comprehensive Human Services Minnehaha County client survey, which shows some wonderful results for the clients that they serve there and their happiness with the services that were provided. We've got the 2019 Association of County Welfare Officials Annual Report for Minnehaha County and Human Services has provided its 2019 annual and fourth quarter report, which also has a lot of great information. We're going to hear from Carrie Benz later today, so she might have an opportunity to come comment on those. And then we have the Auditor's Office 2019 Final Expenditure and Revenue Report. Vicky, good morning.
Madam Chair.
Oh, Commissioner Barth.
On item H there, they had the report ready but found a mistake in it, so they withdrew it for today.
Thank you.
Correct. B and C were still submitted.
Oh, yep, that was my fault. Thank you.
Okay. So we have the final expenditures and revenues for 2019. Total expenditures ended at $57,269,098.4% of budget. Personnel expenses at $38,536,097.8% of budget. And other expenses at $18,733,000, still under budget at 99.6%. And for our revenues, our total revenues $60,610,000, 106.8% of budget. The tax part of that being $42,707,000 at just 99%. And then other revenues, $17,902,131% of budget. Most of that being a board of prisoner revenue that was over budget, our bank franchise tax that came in 1.4 million over budget, and other unbudgeted grant revenue. But as we're compiling the annual report here, we can come back and give a more detailed report of budget versus actual for 2019. So we'll plan to do that. And then, yes, as Commissioner Barth stated, we did find an error that needed to be corrected for January 2020. So we will bring those reports forward next week.
Any questions for Vicky? Generally good news.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so that takes us to item five, personnel. I'd consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions.
So moved.
I could.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next item are abatements recommended for approval. Chris Lola. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Chris Lola, Equalization. Yeah, before you today is four abatements. Three of those are for elderly frees. These ones were not instituted through my office, so it's kind of blindsided that they came through the system. I think they originated with the treasure, which is absolutely fine. So three of them that would have qualified but missed the deadline. I have no issues with those and would recommend approval. The fourth one, which is the RDID 91766, this is, I guess, our office's error at last year where there was buildings on a parcel and that parcel had split and the buildings went over to the new parcel. Well, we moved the building to the new parcel, neglected to take it off of the old parcel. So it got double taxed on that building. So we're recommending approval on that.
Okay. Any questions for Chris? I think we can take these in two different chunks. So first I entertain a motion to approve the elderly tax freeze, RDID 54697-37502 and 42329.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second. Comments, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
A roll call vote. Thank you. Sorry.
Karski.
Aye.
Barth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Bender.
Motion passes unanimously. So the next one would be I'd consider a motion to approve RDID 91766.
That's my motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Benega.
Aye.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Farth. Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
And then I would just like to mention too, just for the public and for the commission, our assessment notice filed from the Equalization Office, we pulled that yesterday. We are set to mail that on Friday. We're going to get that out a week earlier than required by law to give us more time to work with folks, for anybody that thinks our values are a little high. And with that, the main thing I would like to mention is owner occupied, owner occupied, owner occupied. If a property owner owned their home on November 1st of 2019 and lived there, and they have not made application for the owner occupied reduction, they have until March 15th to do so. The owner occupied or the assessment notices that go out this year, if the property is currently in our system, owner occupied as of Friday, it will say on the assessment notice, this property is owner occupied. If it does not say the property is owner occupied, then it is not owner occupied. So again, those folks have until March 15th to make application should they qualify.
Commissioner Karski.
Chris, is that a change from past years where that notice of owner occupied is on there?
Yes. Last year when I started here, I discovered it had never been on there before.
Okay.
And I got that instituted right away that it says this property is owner occupied. That's the first time was last year that it was ever put on the assessment notice down here, so.
There a requirement that that be done?
No. Not currently.
Okay.
No. I was pretty fortunate coming from the Incode Tax System in Brookings, and they had already had that built in that software. Coming from the AS400 system, it was a program change, which when I discovered it wasn't on there, I was like, we need to be telling these people because that's their notice. I have to have them the assessment notice by March 1st. They see that and say, oh, it doesn't say I'm owner occupied. They have until March 15th to make application, so.
Other questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
Recently, this came up again, but most often people don't have owner occupied when they build their own home themselves, when they don't have a realtor, when they don't have a closing at a bank, et cetera. People, when they are building themselves, they need to keep this in mind and get their owner occupied in.
Yes, and we do what we can. You know, and I'm not sure how much was done prior to me coming here, but I've really taken some strides and the office has taken strides. We try and cull those out, and that's kind of why I brought that up, is the one issue that we had. We do what we can, and this person that had, they bought their property, they bought their land, they're not qualified because there's no house. Well, then they build their house, you know, a year later. There's no deed transfer to come to our office to indicate anything. We are unknowledgeable about what's going on there, other than, yes, we got a building permit, so we built the house. We don't know if that's a rental. We don't know anything. I can't give somebody a reduction that I don't know about. And so those ones can kind of slip through the cracks. But in this instance, through our culling of our software, we mailed them the application, said you might be eligible. And now they realize they haven't gotten it and they're upset about it, and I understand that. But as a homeowner, it's your responsibility to be educated and know all your responsibilities with the home. And we do what we can. Our office is not required to reach out to do these. This is an application that needs to come to us. But again, we do what we can. We try and find all those people.
Commissioner Karski.
And to take that one step further, there is no statutory remedy for us to go back and correct. We can only correct moving forward.
That is absolutely correct. There is only one abatable cause for anything to do with owner occupied, and that is for a military service member who is deployed overseas or deployed that was not here at the time due to a deployment to make that application. So that is the only one that's remedied.
Commissioner Hiberger.
Just a thought of one more step in trying to notify people, and obviously this would have to be vetted out, maybe Commissioner Barth with planning and zoning, and maybe a pink slip goes in every building permit that goes out on a house. Because there are not that many in Minnehaha County. I mean, there are, but a building permit that...
I've always said there needs to be some civics course with homeownership. Make sure you put a way to replace your shingles. Make sure you pay your taxes. This is when they're due. Oh, and by the way, if you live here, you should do the owner occupied, you know, all of that stuff. The other thing, the other point I'd like to make is anybody who doesn't receive the owner occupied, they are not being penalized. That is the levy. That is the rate. They're simply not receiving a reduction because they didn't make application. So it's not that they're penalized, they just haven't made application to qualify for a reduction, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, an excellent point there that they're not paying extra, they're just paying the regular rate. And we have so many tax breaks, which our legislature has given people, whether it's nonprofit, owner occupied, ag property, et cetera, non-governmental charitable things. You know, if we just tax people on what the property is worth, then we could, you know, relax about all this stuff. And if those people in peer think that farmers or homeowners should pay less, they should send them a check. Let us, they are taking benefit of giving these tax breaks out of my wallet as a county commissioner. We are paying those people, whereas the state, in my opinion, ought to be paying those people unless they want to give us full credit for it.
Any other comments, questions? I don't disagree with the idea either of the civics course. I just, now that I have children that are trained to adult on their own, there are a lot of things to try to keep track of as you go out there and take on these responsibilities. So we need to do what we can to help. Thank you.
And we're doing what we can. We're working hard and making strides and trying to reach all of those people, you know, but there's all, those ones are, the ones where the owner build are the ones that really can slip through the cracks. Almost everything else has a transfer. You know, there's multiple steps in there, the abstract companies, the banks, the certificate of value, when that comes forward says, is it currently, will it continue, is it not, when will I occupy? I mean, those are all things. And when we see those, then that triggers us to send that. So the owner build ones are really kind of a sticky one. But the good news is there's less than there is more, you know, so. And it ultimately falls back to, you're a homeowner, you have responsibilities. Like I mentioned to Carol, I said, when I went into Great Clips, they didn't give me my veteran discount. Why? I should have gotten it. I'm a veteran and they offer it. Well, they didn't know I was a veteran. They can't offer me something they don't know about. It's the same scenario, so. We do what we can, and again, just a reminder, anybody in the public that lived in their home, that owned their home on November 1st of 2019, if you have not made application, I would rather have two or three applications in my office than none. Don't be afraid to reapply. You can do that online now through Department of Revenue. You can come into our office, call us, we'll mail you one out, and you can mail it back or drop it off. I mean, there's multiple ways to get it to us, but, so, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next item are notices or requests. There are none. Item eight, planning and zoning notices, there are none. That takes us to item nine, petition for compromise of lien. Melinda, good morning.
Good morning. Melinda Storely, Commission Assistant. Before you, is a request to compromise lien DPNO 23689 in the amount of $1,424.53. The petitioner resides at 119 Gordon Drive in Sioux Falls and is the lienee's former wife. They were married in 1971, experienced various family difficulties, and separated multiple times prior to their divorce, August 6, 1996. The lienee recently deceased, January 18, 2020, but had transferred his interest in the property by quick claim deed, January 16, 1989, to the petitioner. However, the lien fees he incurred for poor relief and legal representation between 1989 and 2015 have attached to the home. The petitioner is not planning to sell the home at this time, but would like to know that this lien is no longer attached to the property. She is requesting a compromise of DPNO 23689 with no payment to release the lien only and so far as the real property legally described as Lot 9 in Block 2 of Sycamore East, in addition to the city of Sioux Falls, Minnehaha County, South Dakota, according to the recorded plat thereof. The lien is not the responsibility of the petitioner, as the debt was incurred by the lienee only and will remain in full against the lienee in the amount of $1,424.53. Below, I list the documents that were confirmed, the lien summary, the certificate of death, the divorce certificate, and the quick claim deed.
All right. Thank you. If the petitioner is here... petitioner's not here. Okay. So are there any questions for Melinda? Commissioner Hiberger.
I don't know that it's a question for Melinda, but since the lienee is deceased and there was a lien against that person, is there any way that the county is able to go after any possible assets that that person has? Do we do anything?
From what I understand from the petitioner and her daughter, the individual was, I'm lost in words here, exalment, thank you. So as far as I know, I don't have any way to confirm that.
Thank you. Other comments or questions?
I'd make a motion to resolve this with no payment from the applicant. And I would also say that Melinda does a great job on this. I remember when I had to do it, and I would be saying everything wrong.
Commissioner Karski.
Don't have to agree, Cindy.
Sorry, you worked out.
Commissioner?
That was a motion.
And I'll second it with comment, if I may. And, you know, there's so much more that you learn when you read in, read all the details in the paperwork. And I will support removing the lien. And how can you, you remove the lien from the property, well, there's, you only have a dead person left that you're leaning that doesn't have anything. So, I mean, just to remove the lien in its entirety makes sense. And when you look at what is technically maybe lienable and what shouldn't be, and the dates and divorce and ongoing circumstances, you know, we might have a couple hundred dollars left that we're maybe have some statutory ability to collect, but to have that come back again, I mean, your staff time and the work that you've done, it's just not worth pursuing this any further, so. I'm in favor of removing it entirely.
Any other comments? If not, we have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Hiberger.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Farth.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So this is our opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone here who'd like to speak for public comment. Good morning. If you could just give your name and...
Tessa Schwanz.
And your address, sorry.
Oh, it's 26526 Lakeview Place in Hartford. Good morning. My name is Tessa Schwanz. I am the Visionary Director for the Wall Lake Legacy Trail Project, and I'm just here to give you guys kind of a quick little update of our progress and let you know kind of what's been going on since our last meeting in January. So I'm aware that you guys have received some letters of, you know, just the, like, some of the people that are probably more against the trail. I just want you to know that our efforts are moving forward as far as getting more conversations and creating more conclusions as far as what we would want to do moving forward with the trail project. We've had some meetings with the Steering Committee. We've had healthy hometown organization meetings that have led us into kind of venues and ways that we could kind of try to reach out to some of the residents that have some of those concerns and issues. We are planning some more meetings moving forward, and hopefully we want to have another roundtable discussion in late March with Infrastructure Design Group and some more of the residents around the area so that we can have some more positive information of what exactly is going on, so that way we don't have false information, we have the real information going out, so that way we can come to conclusions together as a community. We've also talked to Falls Area Bicycleists Group, which is the FAB group out of Sioux Falls, and they are an advocacy group. And we're hoping to have them on board with us as well, which they have decided to do. And they would help give us any type of information that we would need for safety concerns as far as stats and that sort of thing. So when we go into the meeting, hopefully by the end of March, we have some of these statistics that we can give out to the residents as well, as far as what the safety parameters are with trails and with walking and running trails. So that's kind of where we're at. I know, I don't know if you guys have any other questions for me, but I just kind of wanted to give you guys a brief overview of kind of where we're at and what we're sitting with as far as the Wall Lake Legacy Trail Project.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Benega.
I'd just like to make one comment. Most of the questions that I've answered or responded to are frankly a misunderstanding about the support of the county commission at this point.
Yeah.
And it's, our support is for the filing, as you well know, for an IRS 501(c)(3) nonprofit status. Has nothing to do with any future development related issues that you are now addressing with your group. So I appreciate your coming forward and talking about that, but I want to reiterate that the misunderstanding seems to be about our approval of the 501(c)(3) application, so.
Okay. Okay. Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anyone else here who'd like to speak for public comment? All right. Moving on to regular business. First item is a presentation on Forward Sioux Falls. Mike Lynch, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners. Mike Lynch, Director of Investor Relations for Forward Sioux Falls. Pleasure to brief you today on this ongoing project now in its 33rd year. Let's see, can I just advance it from here then? Okay, great. So just as a definition, basically, Forward Sioux Falls, partnership between the Development Foundation and the Chamber of Commerce, created in 1987, and it's an economic development project that we feel has been extremely successful in lifting up the area's economy. Each five-year program, and there is a campaign that's developed every five years, but after the campaign, and really it's all about the body of work. So the program of work each and every five-year program is freshly imagined. So basically, we determine from the business community what the greatest needs are from a workforce and economic development perspective. And then we draft the programming, and then we go out and raise the funds. Currently, we have over 400 investors, and in the last campaign, which ended in 2016, over $15 million was raised throughout the business community to support that programming. And the next campaign period begins this August. Basically, we believe that Forward Sioux Falls really has surpassed all expectations in really two areas. Job growth coupled with the diversification of economy and an enhancement of the profile of Sioux Falls from more of a regional scale to a national scale, and we continue to work on that. But we feel that, and I think a lot of people would not be able to deny the fact that Sioux Falls has really, over the past several years, been put on the map on a national scale, and we'll get to some accolades a little bit later. But it's really stood the test of time. As I mentioned, 33 years, develops a strong ROI for the community, and really embodies this cooperative collaborative spirit, and our mantra is, "A rising tide lifts all boats." Just wanted to give you a little perspective on the governance structure. The governance structure of Forward Sioux Falls is comprised of the Executive Committee of the Development Foundation and the Executive Committee of the Chamber of Commerce, and then there are five, up to five, but currently there are five appointed members as well. And here is the public-private funding comparison. I think this is a good graph to show, just to kind of break down how much of those funds are generated from the public and how much are driven from the private sector. And you can tell by a vast majority, it's primarily a privately funded group. That being said, we certainly appreciate the investment that Minnehaha County and our other public partners have provided throughout the years. As we go out and survey the business community and get their feedback as far as what those needs are, you know, the unemployment rate, again, no secret, has been historically low in Sioux Falls, but that's really only part of the equation. This is the labor participation rate, and the labor participation rate is basically those age 18 to 65 who are able to work. So those age 18 to 65, nearly 75% of those people in the Sioux Falls MSA are working, which is, as you can tell, significantly higher than the national average. And what that really boils down to then is that we're really getting, you know, by and large, the most out of our available workforce here. That being said, there's always those opportunities that we can, you know, try and deliver upon. But, you know, we've got a great employment base here in Sioux Falls, but, you know, we want to continue to improve that, continue to grow on those workforce development programs, retention programs, and certainly the attraction programs, because ultimately, a lot of our employers do need more workers. This is an interesting slide, and it really tells the tale, I believe, of, you know, what we have right now within our community in terms of the diversification. This is the enrollment history by ethnicity, and, you know, it's quite striking, 1995% of the school district population was non-white, and now it's approaching 40%. And we believe that is a great opportunity for us. You know, we have this mixing, and it's occurred over the, you know, the last several years, but really has intensified over the last five to 10. It's a great opportunity that we have these individuals who can bring their culture and their passion to be able to add to our workforce component. And it's, you know, it's just a great thing. We believe in a great, some may feel that this is a challenge. We feel it's definitely an opportunity for our economy. So a little bit about the current program, which is Forward Sioux Falls 2021. It all generated in 2015 after the market analysis, came up with a strategic workforce action agenda. And this Venn diagram here, you can tell there are those areas in talent attraction and retention, along with those areas in talent development, and then there are some of those areas that blend into one another. So within the Development Foundation primarily, a lot of this programming is being conducted that really leverages our communication and collaboration with K-12, with post-secondary, with business. And it's really all a matter of trying to combine forces, and it's a matter of opening up the dialogue so that the educational system can really be open to the great opportunities that there are in business and the other way around as well, so that that business is communicating with the educational system in terms of what their needs are. So these are some of the programs, again, primarily driven through the Development Foundation Office. Also, within the Development Foundation Office, we're constantly trying to attract new businesses, site selectors, meetings with those, national brokers, land sales, all that is important. site selectors, meetings with those, national brokers, land sales, all that is important. And we're going to talk about this here within Foundation Park, which I know you're all aware of, South Dakota's first mega-site, over 800 acres. The Development Foundation is responsible for selling parcels of land. Great opportunity for businesses to relocate or locate at the intersection of two interstates. It has rail, it has the infrastructure, and it also allows for that potential company. For example, if the state G O D gets a call and says, "We need a mega-site," there's between 300 and 400 acres set aside for that type of an organization to house itself there and allow for, you know, several hundred or even over 1,000 employees. Windchill, as you probably are also aware, was the first tenant, 52 acres, contains most of the cold storage product for Smithfield Foods, as well as Wells Blue Bunny. Dakota Carriers is also housed and operational out there, along with Nordica Warehouses, also expanding their location. The Discovery District is another program within the Forward Sioux Falls Initiative. We, and you'll tell, you'll be able to tell here in a second, the various partners involved here. But this is out by the Community College for Sioux Falls. It will allow for those biomedical organizations to, those startups, to populate out there and manufacture products that are really cutting-edge. And it's a very exciting, very exciting park that's being established out there. And here you can tell the different partners that are involved as well: USD, the Chamber of Commerce, Development Foundation, the City of Sioux Falls, Forward Sioux Falls, and the Board of Regents. By the way, the Discovery District recently named several weeks ago a new president, Dr. Mark Brown. He's from Colorado, and I'm very excited for him to lead the way out there. First projects, Alumend and S A B. Also, within the Forward Sioux Falls program, there is an effort for business retention and expansion. So Mike Gray, within the Development Foundation Office, visits with businesses just to assess their opportunities and challenges, to try and bridge the gap, if you will, for some of those instances where if an organization may be looking to expand, that the Development Foundation could, you know, be able to kind of fill in some of those gaps, answer some of the questions, kind of point them in the right direction. A very good, very beneficial service that is provided. SiouxFalls.com is a website that primarily is focusing on quality-of-life attributes in Sioux Falls, and it's going to get a little bit of a makeover here. We took this site, basically, which was initially the Sioux Falls Has Job site, and we revamped it to make it more anecdotal so that those who are interested in locating or relocating to Sioux Falls could understand a little bit better what Sioux Falls is about, what different things there are to do in terms of live, work, and play. But we're going to try and, you know, add some components to it that basically will enable that individual to go to that next level. So if they are interested, for example, in coming to live here, maybe we could direct them to housing opportunities, or if they're interested in a particular line of work, that we can kind of gear them to that. What we don't want this to be is a full-fledged job portal like Indeed, for example. We want it to be more encompassing than that. Business advocacy is a longstanding program within Forward Sioux Falls through the Chamber Office. Justin Bentas, for example, attends most of the commission meetings, as you know. But we also are attending all city council meetings and are lobbying and peer full-time and have constant communication with our federal delegation, just so that we can represent the business community in ways that maybe they cannot, you know, in terms of their busyness with their everyday life, running their business. We want to make sure that their interests are served, that if there are, you know, pieces of legislation that come up that could drastically affect their business model, that we're there to support them. And it also, you know, has, you know, varying effects with the visitor industry, for example, and making sure that regulation and taxes, so that if businesses are wanting to come to our state, that, you know, the regulatory and taxation remains enticing for them. And then education, housing, and of course, workforce, also big components with the advocacy program. Here are some of the other programs, and I know that in an eight-to-10-minute presentation, it's difficult to really cover everything, but just wanted to try and encapsulate some of the different programs, such as the Zeal Center, Sioux Falls Thrive, Sioux Empire Housing Partnership, YPN, there's just a number of different programs contained within Forward Sioux Falls. Again, all with the understanding that if we play a role in these different programmatic activities, that it will lift up the economy as a whole and ultimately benefit the individual business and educational community. Because we're looking at this from a holistic perspective, and again, Forward Sioux Falls is never going to take full credit for the positive economic things that are taking place, however, we do feel that Forward Sioux Falls has played a major role in that. Construction values for a straight year, which have exceeded $700 million. The MSA job growth, 29,000 jobs added in the past nine years. And the population, you know, I mentioned that employers certainly are continuing to need more employees, but we have been adding more people to the Sioux Falls MSA, 16.5% increase over the last nine years. But we're working hard, especially from a regional perspective, to try and attract those individuals who, if they don't know that much about Sioux Falls, we want to be able to inform them and draw them here. Here's some accolades, just to kind of finish up, that have been circulated throughout the media. Forbes Magazine ranks Sioux Falls as the number-one best small place for business and careers, and some of these accolades have been repetitive. This particular one, 12 of the last 20 years, Sioux Falls has received this. Number-one city in the U.S. for young professionals, and if you can see the different cities that are noted on the map, it's pretty impressive. We're really going up against cities that are, and areas that are much larger than Sioux Falls and comparing extremely well with them. Best city for entrepreneurs, number 10. Number seven top 100 places to live, livability. And again, all leading to this can-do, community attitude. And here are just, you know, three points of, points to note that we feel, you know, make this community such a great place to live, work, and play. 58% yes vote on the Denny Sanford Premier's Center. 85% yes vote for the Sioux Falls School District bond issue, and our United Way, you know, being the number-two in the nation per capita. Again, is that, you know, directly related to everything that Forward Sioux Falls does? Are we taking full credit? Absolutely not. But again, we're trying to, you know, invest in this community in a way that lifts everyone up, and we feel that these are really stark examples of that. As a side note, Forward Sioux Falls is currently working on a book that is due to be published in June of 2020. You know, when you think about 1987 and the leadership that was involved in the creation of Forward Sioux Falls, a lot of those individuals are getting up there in age, and we want to make sure that we just restore historically what has occurred within Forward Sioux Falls, and it's a great story to tell. And we also want to be able to instill within the younger generation, the younger leaders of today and tomorrow, the impact that Forward Sioux Falls has had so that they can carry on the torch. So we're really looking forward to that, and we'll make sure the commission office has a copy. And with that, are there any questions?
Thank you. Lots of great information. Are there any questions, comments? Commissioner Barth?
Who is it that's getting older?
Not you, Commissioner Barth.
Okay, thanks.
You're ageless.
Honestly, what about, are we getting a new person to replace Nick Fosheim? Is that in your area of...
It's not directly in my area, Commissioner, but yes, there will be a replacement for Nick.
And is your organization working on the census to make sure that we're fully counted here in this part of the state?
Yeah, we're not directly working in that capacity either.
Nobody is. And yet, if we don't get ourselves properly counted, we don't get our proper representation and peer or anywhere else.
I don't disagree.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Benega?
Mike, one of the obvious goals has been growth in employment, and I think that there's been an emphasis on VOTEC-related education and keeping kids in the area. Excuse my voice. But anyway, to make a long story short, have we seen growth in the local VOTEC enrollment? And is that anywhere in the information that we provide? Because it seems like there's more and more interest from the business community and from the students from an early age to be able to pursue a VOTEC opportunity that frankly employers are paying very well for.
Yeah, I couldn't agree more, Commissioner. Absolutely. So again, through the efforts of the Development Foundation primarily, we are, we have worked closely with Southeast Tech, and just some examples of that would be the Sector Breakfast that they've hosted. I think some of you may have attended those in the past. Those have been very successful. So we've helped to facilitate that. We also, through the Build Dakota Scholarship, Forward Sioux Falls provides some incentive dollars as a grant opportunity called Sponsor a Scholar, so that there's more industry buy-in above and beyond the dollars that were invested by T. Denny Sanford and the state. But yes, as far as the growth is concerned, I want to say, you know, without, and I don't have this in front of me, but I want to say the last two years, there's been a 6% growth at STI. So they're doing some amazing things, you know, they're adding programming. And again, a lot of this is due to the dialogue that's taking place between business and education. So President Griggs at STI has done a great job in engaging the business community and making sure that if there are gaps, that those gaps are filled. I know they've added new programs. So there's a lot to be extremely excited about at Southeast Technical Institute.
Thank you.
Other questions? Well, we just know that...
One more question.
Okay.
You know, you mentioned the high participation rate that we have. Don't we also have a pretty high rate of people working multiple jobs? And is that because of affordability issues in our area? Or is it because our jobs are, I mean, it's easy work or something?
Yeah, well, I know, and I've seen, I've seen that statistic as well, that we are among the highest states in the nation for having two jobs, and that's certainly something, you know, increasing, you know. When we, when we talk about attraction of jobs, we want to make sure going forward that we're attracting those jobs that are certainly above a living, a livable wage. That's very important to us. And a lot of, you know, the jobs that are being, you know, attracted, for example, through Foundation Park and Discovery District, Discovery District, those jobs, for example, on average are, I believe, right around 65,000 is what they're anticipating. So that certainly, you know, I think it's going to take, it's going to take time for that to happen, but I, you know, it's, it has been a challenge in our state, I know.
Anything else? Well, we do have challenges, you know, I know there are lots of, it's the highest rate of working mothers here as well in South Dakota, but at the same time, I think all of us that live here know that there are reasons that we get all those awards. It's a great place to live, and your organization has certainly contributed to that. We really thank you for being here today.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your investment.
So that takes us to our next presentation on the Minnehaw County Human Services, Carrie Benz. We're going to shoot again for that eight-to-10-minute range, if that works.
I got it. I got it. Okay. So what better way to start out 2020 than to talk about budget, right? So we're one of the first ones out of the gate, and so we don't really have trends to share with you too much, but you would have received our fourth-quarter report along with our annual report for 2019. I think our numbers reflect really good fiscal management. I think we've really done a great job of developing programs, and much of that, I think, is really due to our outcome-based reports that we've been able to work with IT and developing. We do a better job of tracking our populations that we're working with. We do a good job of fiscally tracking those individuals, and I think we've been able to have a better impact on our community as far as really assisting people in getting connected to the right service at the right time, and that's really pivotal. The establishment of additional community collaboratives, I would say that's probably one of the biggest pieces for us in moving forward. The government should only be involved where we need to be involved and not anywhere else. And so we really have strived at developing those collaborative efforts so that we embellish the services that are already here in the community. We've had new leadership identified at the Union Gospel Mission, and the doors have been opened for us to be able to collaborate with them, which has been absolutely delightful. We've expanded our support and work with St. Vincent de Paul, providing a lot of individuals with additional support that they need. We've worked closely with the City of Sioux Falls with their Housing and Development Department, looking at trying to better assist people in navigating the system that we know is complex, that we know is challenging, and getting connected to those services, being able to maintain housing and fully support their growth in that area. We've been involved with Thrive, being on many committees. We've established some really good rapport with the hospital emergency departments. I'll talk a bit in about, in a bit about the Triage Center and how we've been involved with that. And we've also really embraced working with the Public Defender's Office with our jail reentry program with Alliance. And so with all of that, our collaborations have proven to be incredibly effective for us. Our program impacts, can you scroll that down just a bit? The program impacts that we've had, the responsiveness to client needs, we've really been able to streamline our access to programs, not only internally, but we feel that we've been able to do that by collaborating with other programs so that access is readily available to all individuals. And then being fiscally responsible, we not only look out for our office, but we've been able to collaborate and have impact in hopes of providing better service so that we have less people that reside or visit the jail often. Our Public Defender's Office, hopefully utilizing the courts a whole lot less. But most of all, it's really been beneficial to the clients. They've actually been able to work much harder at empowering themselves to do better and not depend on other supportive programs. And then obviously, county is one of the key stakeholders in the development of the Triage Center. We started that program, I was looking through documents from about eight years ago. And so it's been really an incredible experience to see that come to fruition, and hopefully this fall, all of you will be able to see the fruits of that labor. Commissioner Karski has been pivotal in being able to get that launched and off the ground. And so it's incredibly exciting to know that we will have even better impact on the needs in our community. So that's kind of 2019 in a snapshot. We've had a lot of things going on, but just to kind of give you a quick snapshot of where we're going to focus some energies for 2021 and ways that we can hopefully have impact and what will impact our budget. We really have focused on prevention and having a proactive focus. We know that the longer that people are homeless, the bigger impact that that has on their lives, it has on their children's lives, as well as the impact on our budget. So we're working on being more proactive, getting on the front end of the bus and not waiting until we get to the back end of the bus, and then we have even larger, more complex issues. Technology, we're working on... complex issues. Technology, we're working on the focus of our software needs, striving to develop better reports, having better devices to be able to track in not only individuals, but our services and the impact that we have on our community. We really have identified our gaps and needs and services as these are the three primary areas. We have a huge need for transitional housing. We have a number of individuals that are exiting, being incarcerated, those that are exiting the care system, being in hospitals, being released into the communities, and really being transitioned to where. There is nowhere. And so, we really need to work with the city and our other partners in identifying what is that where and having some transitional space. We also look at affordable housing. That will be a huge collaborative with the city. We're developing a new board that I'm sure you've heard rumblings about in our development, and that is exciting. I think it really will put some actual force and really a lot more effort will be invested in developing that in our community. And then, our community education, not only to our clients, but to landlords, to our stakeholders. How do we best invest for success? And I think that's key. When we invest in the people, I think that we can better invest in our communities tomorrow's. We have stronger people, I think, with even Forward Sioux Falls. There's some prime examples. When we have education, we have work development, those type of programmings, we need that in order to have a wise and better future for our community. Staff development, we're doing some investment there. Excuse me, we know that by having empowered staff, knowledgeable staff, they're better to address the needs of those that we serve. We know that it's a stressful position. We hear a lot of really difficult stories. And they're not just stories, they're the lives of people that we deal with, and they are complex issues. And so, we need to better tool our staff so that we're prepared to address those needs. And then, also navigating systemic challenges to create that positive change. We know that our community is filled with complexities, the challenges that our community faces. But we also believe that by working collaboratively together, creating that positive change, we can have a bigger and better impact with brighter futures. So, that's it. You guys have our annual reports, and so, if you have any questions about those, I would just note that 93, we utilized 93% of our budget for 2019. Rent was a huge focus for us. We've tried to be more proactive rather than reactive, keeping kiddos in school. Enrolled in class is critical for us and the impact that that has otherwise. And just to note, 5.5% of the Minnehaha County population visited the Human Services Office in 2019. So, we've kept busy, but I think we've really been able to create some positive impact. And I think our strategies in doing that are reflective in not only our budget, but in those that we've served. We provided you with the reports back of their assessment of our service, and I think we've done well at collaborating with others. So, we've had a great year, and we look forward to this year. I'm not ready for 2021, so let's not rush it at all, however. So, I'll be open to questions if you have questions. Commissioner Karski.
No question, Carrie, but a comment. You've had some big shoes to fill from your predecessors, Carol and you.
Yes, I have.
Yeah, I mean...
And she has smaller feet. So, but big shoes.
But just to congratulate you, I mean, you are, your department is the safety net for a lot of people in the county for, I mean, maybe paying a utility bill, helping with rent, getting things started. I like to think of more as a hand up than a hand out, but the resources that you're given, and you do a good job of making it work well. So, just to thank you and your staff and encourage you to keep doing a good job.
Thank you. I'll take it back and share.
Anything else? Commissioner Barth?
Aye. Being a longtime observer of these processes, it's great to see change happening with like the Union Gospel, the Glory House, the St. Francis facility. You know, our non-governmental partners are working hard, but it still seems like things are not demonstrably getting better on the street, et cetera. And, you know, better paying jobs, less expensive housing, transportation especially. For those out there that were watching, Carrie Benz did a great job of talking about her operation, but it's just the tip of the iceberg. There's so much more going on, and yet, it's still not enough. And thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Well, we do really appreciate you being here today. You did a really great job of summarizing a lot of work that you guys do over there in the short amount of time that we allot you. So, I very much appreciate that. I really do also appreciate the reports that you've been providing on a quarterly basis and annual basis because they're chock full of a lot of great information, and so, I really appreciate that.
Awesome. You're welcome. Thank you much.
All right. Thank you. All right. That takes us to item 12, which is to consider proposals and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with SCRAM Systems for Home Detention Electronic Monitoring Services. Good morning. I heard that you were encouraged to bring devices so that we could all try them out, but sadly, they are not here.
We have one. Who wants to put it on?
I'm not going to drink till next weekend.
Mike Matson, jail warden. Yes, Commissioners, I am here this morning. Two things. One, for the commission to officially select our recommendation to move forward with a vendor for our electronic monitoring. And two, to sign the contract with the selected vendor. I have with me Lieutenant Kurt Schoneman from the jail, as well as Jamie Grabot, Director of JDC. This was a collaborative effort in the selection process. We had, we went to RFP in December. Those bids, proposals came back. They were opened. We narrowed it down to two. Those were the two lowest-priced vendors. And then, those two came in to do an onsite demonstration. The result of that demonstration, our recommendation is to go with SCRAM. The panel that reviewed both products consisted of jail administration, jail supervisors. We've had some corrections officers look at it. Jamie Grabot was there along with one of his staff members, and we also had pre-trial services there as well to look at the facial recognition part of the platform. All in all, we feel that SCRAM is a good product. It's a little bit more expensive for the GPS part of it, but they're providing a 30% more shelf stock as opposed to STOP who is only offering 20%. And then, the over-shelf allowance for SCRAM is 70 cents a day, where STOP is $2.95 a day. So, there's a substantial difference there, even though that the SCRAM GPS unit is 25 cents more per day per user. The check-in app, from our perspective, we really didn't put too much weight into it because that's, any cost with that is going to be absorbed by pre-trial services. It's not going to be a cost to the jail or JDC unless Jamie decides to use that part of it. But they're offering a tiered system, SCRAM is, where the more users that you have, the cheaper it is. The base one is 50 cents a day per user for the check-in application. And it appears that pre-trial services is okay with starting there and seeing how it works and seeing how they can utilize it if we do go forward with this. We did bring a unit with from SCRAM. One of the reasons why we like this unit is it's very simple to use. It's one back plate and the GPS unit and a strap, whereas the competitor had six pieces. And during the demonstration, it seemed difficult and cumbersome and would be more difficult for staff to be utilizing. Does anybody want to try it on?
I heard Commissioner Barth say he did.
Well, I certainly could, but I'm confident that it works and...
Do you want to put it on a wrist instead of throwing a leg on the counter?
Sure. Let me put it on here. That's basically it. This back plate is apparently broken, but...
It needs to be in touch with your skin, though, right?
No, not this one. This does not detect alcohol. This is simply...
Oh, I'm sorry. And I can wear it.
Simply GPS. So, our participants on electronic monitoring, they're, it's beneficial because they get to be at home, and we're still monitoring them. And they get allowed to go to work. They can still provide for their families. They're paying, paying to be on the program, but it's cheaper than our traditional work release was, so.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Just wondering how, does it have a locking system so that you put it on a person, and it's not going to come off, and they're going to stick it in bed, and then they're going to go run around all night long?
Nope.
And so, how does it, how does it lock in place?
This back plate is broken, apparently. So, it will click on, and then it stays on. The only way to take it off is with a screwdriver, and you pop the clips, and it comes off. If that happens, the system will detect it, and we get an alert saying this person just took off their bracelet.
Commissioner Karski.
Is this a new vendor?
This would be a new vendor. SCRAM is our, the vendor that does 24/7. That's another benefit. We'd be on a single platform for 24/7 and EM.
Okay. So, how many users per day? How many people are wearing one of these?
We have roughly 45 to... 55?
Okay, 50 roughly, and the cost per day?
$15 a day.
Okay. Versus how much to have them in jail? $95, $100?
$97.34.
Okay, okay. So, it makes sense.
Yep.
Okay.
Commissioner Heiburger?
Aye.
Anyone else? So, there's a value in the sense of your $15 a day versus $97.34, but then there are the huge values that you mentioned earlier, that these folks that are not in jail, they're able to be home, help take care of their kids, help provide for their families, go to work every day. I just, I think it's a great thing that Minnehaha County does. And I know we're early adopters of this technology, and it's been a great benefit to the families in Minnehaha County, the employers in Minnehaha County, and to the jail budget, actually. So, I think it's just a win-win all the way around.
Absolutely.
All right. If there aren't any other, or Commissioner Benega?
No, I would just make a motion that we authorize the chair to sign the agreement with SCRAM Systems.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? If not, roll call vote, please.
Karski?
Aye.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much for being here.
Thank you very much.
That takes us to item 13, which is to authorize the Facilities Department to purchase a 2020 Dodge Ram 3500 pickup through South Dakota State Bid. Mark Crins.
Good morning, Commissioner. Mark Crins, Facilities Department. We have $25,000 in the 2020 budget allocated to purchase a new vehicle. The proposed vehicle is available through the South Dakota State Bid, contract number 17339 from Beetle Ford Chrysler Dodge Jeep for $29,615.46. This vehicle replaces a 2001 Ford F-250, which was declared surplus and sold at auction in 2019 for $2,800.
Ma'am Chair, we can't say no to this guy. I make a motion to approve this.
Second. Motion and a second. Are there any other comments or questions?
I'll second that.
Already did.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't hear that. My ears are full from being ill.
So, the only other question I'd had is, I mean, you said you had $25,000 budgeted. This is obviously a little bit over that. You anticipate you'll have money in your budget to cover this?
Yes, I'm confident I can find some savings, so.
Okay. I just wanted to, I figured you did, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yep.
Okay, so we had a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please.
Barth?
Aye.
Benega?
Aye.
Heiburger?
Aye.
Karski?
Aye.
Bender?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item 14, Legislative Update. Craig Dewey.
Good morning, Craig Dewey, Commission Office. Legislative session is a little over halfway through right now. In the middle of next week will be Crossover Day. That is the day that bills must pass out of the Chamber of Origin to be able to continue in the legislative process. Quick update on, we continue to track a number of different bills, but a quick update on several that are of particular note. Last week, we discussed House Bill 1099, which was a bill that would allow counties to impose a local option temporary half-cent sales and use tax to issue revenue bonds to fund public safety infrastructure. That bill passed out of House Committee in an eight-to-five vote, but ended up failing on the full House floor, 32 to 35. A two-thirds majority was required for that, so there'd be 47 votes total. So, unfortunately, that bill did not make it. Commissioner Heiburger did testify in favor of that bill, along with a number of other commissioners from around the state who showed up, certainly emphasizing the importance of local control is something that counties will continue to do in the future. And then, the other bill of particular note is Senate Bill 157. That would streamline zoning processes for counties across the state. And largely, 157 would not impact Minnehaha County. There have been a number of discussions about zoning around the state and Minnehaha County's zoning ordinances are viewed as one of the gold standards as far as the ordinances and how they impact development and weighing the concerns of local residents as well. So, Senate Bill 157 was shaped in discussion with the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners amongst a number of other ag-based organizations and other groups as well. The bill originated from the governor's office, and it is being brought forward in Senate State Affairs at the request of the governor. The bill should be heard this week. I believe Wednesday is the committee hearing date. And Commissioner Heiburger, if you wanted to offer additional thoughts here, going up to testify in favor of that bill as well.
So, I will be going up today and testifying tomorrow morning on behalf of Senate Bill 157. It was voted unanimously by the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners Executive Board to support this bill. I would ask each one of you to take a few minutes today and/or tomorrow morning and send the Senate...
Senate State Affairs.
Senate State Affairs an email and ask them to support this bill. I think I mentioned last week that the staff and myself have gone through this bill. It does not affect Minnehaha County. It just does business better across the state of South Dakota. It's a good bill. And like I said, SDACC is in support of this bill, too. So, I'd ask you to send your emails, please.
Commissioner Karski.
Can you get us a list of the senators that are out on, that are on that committee? I'm sorry. Your ears, my mouth, so that we can correspond with them. I'm not too sure who's all on that.
I'd be happy to do that after the commission.
And maybe you did already.
I don't believe that I provided it in the context of this bill, so I'd be happy to send that list to you after this meeting wraps up.
Anything else? Commissioner Barth?
House Bill 1099, was that in part defeated in part because the legislature wants to keep all the sales tax for themselves, or was it because they just didn't want the counties to have any say over revenues?
One of the arguments that was brought forward by the Department of Revenue was that if another governmental entity was allowed access to sales tax revenue, it could inhibit the state's ability to collect sales tax in the future.
Anything else? Well, I mean, I think we're all thinking the things that we're not saying out loud. It's just that, you know, we brought numerous ideas forward to peer to try to help counties deal with the cost of public safety. And while they all get defeated, there doesn't seem to be any other ideas brought forward. And so, the only option that is left to the counties is to raise property taxes. And I'm not convinced that that is the most equitable way to deal with those issues. Commissioner Heiburger?
I'm going to add one more thing. Another comment that we heard was, well, we need to do more criminal justice reform. I would tell you that Minnehaha County is leading in the nation in the type of work we're doing in criminal justice reform. And we do not just will-nil put people in jail that don't need to be there. And as an example this morning is a SCRAM bracelet. It's how we keep our citizens that have been charged with a crime that are not, that can function in the, in the community and still be safe. We are working really hard, and I think that there's a lack of understanding in the state as to what Minnehaha County, Pennington County, Lincoln County, some of these counties are really working hard to keep our jail... to keep our jail populations in control and not throw people in jail that shouldn't be there.
Ma'am Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
You know, I, I talked to Dusty Johnson when he worked for Senator, Governor Dugard. I talked to Chief Justice Gilbertson and I talked to legislators and they said, "All you have to do is opt out." And so when we opt out, that's because the governor said we should opt out. It's because the Supreme Court says we should opt out. It's because the legislature should, said we should opt out. So your property taxes are high because of our legislature, our governor and our chief justice. Don't blame me.
All right, anything further? Do you have anything else you wanted to talk about, Craig?
No, unless you had other questions about other bills.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 15, Minnehaha County Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports? Commissioner Karski.
A couple actually. One in reference to the presentation by Forward Sioux Falls, Nick Folchheim who resigned from the Makita Lakita Board. I know last week I was gone, but there was an email sent out that an offer was being made to an individual who will assume that position. I don't think a name's been tied to that announcement yet, but an offer was being made for that. And then, I don't think I'm letting the cat out of the bag here, but our public defender hasn't announced the appointment of a deputy public defender, individual that's been in that office for some time, Betsy Doyle. So congratulations to her and I'm sure she's the most qualified person. I've worked with Betsy and I've been impressed with her.
All right, Commissioner Barth.
You know, it's in transition, but Interlake Community Action has been my liaison and now Cindy has it. But Heartland House is affiliated with, with that organization and last week we had a fundraiser for Heartland House. Ma'am Chair, you were there, Cindy was there, Carol was there, the mayor was there. And while turnout was not what they hoped for, they were able to raise near what they hoped for. So I appreciate everyone's support on that and let's see if we can maybe do it again next year.
It was very fun. I wasn't able to stay for a long time, but it was, it was very fun. I appreciate you always being so good about spearheading the invitation to that and getting the table, so. All right, anything else? I just would give an update on the Homeless Advisory Board. I know there was a presentation made to the Joint City County Board in approving, kind of reconstituting that board and we are working on, Carrie kind of alluded to this, we're working on finalizing the organizational documents for that and I think we're almost there. So in one of the next few meetings, we'll be bringing that forward. That board's gonna be reconstituted instead of HAB, the Homeless Advisory Board is, is now Ahab. We thought we'd add another letter to it. So it's the Accessible Housing Advisory Board is what we'll be coming forward with. So it's kind of a combination of a, a city committee that had kind of gone defunct, that had some powers that really needed to be in place, has the ability to influence how funds are allocated towards housing and still keeps a focus on homelessness. So it's, I think it will be a great solution, a great way to kind of re-energize that group, so. All right, there are no other liaison reports. New business, any new business? Okay, old business, any old business? If not, it entertain a motion to recess.
Motion to recess.
Second.
Motion and a second, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. We will try to, we'll take about a 10-minute break and then we'll reconvene.